Good evening, the time is now seven oh one and welcome to the March nineteenth twenty twenty five Red Clay Consolidated School District Board of Education Board Meeting. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may now be seated. Ms. Stevens, if you could please commence roll call.
Ms. English, here. Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Dr. Neesmith.
Here.
Ms. Sander.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Forum has finished out.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Now we move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the March nineteenth twenty twenty five Board Meeting Agenda as presented?
So moved, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. Do I have a second?
I have a comment. So I know that in Board Action Item seven C, it says rescind Board Policy four zero zero five point one. But I believe it should be four zero zero five point one A.
That's correct.
Okay. So I'd like to make that amendment.
And do you make a second as well to Ms. English's motion?
As long as it's, as long as that change is noted.
Yeah, so I just need a second for the motion and then.
Neesmith.
Excellent. And then we'll take the motion amendment. Do I have a second for the motion amendment?
Second, Neesmith.
Thank you, Dr. Neesmith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended agenda passes. We now move on to recognitions.
Good evening.
Good evening, Red Clay family and friends. Superintendent Green and President Matthews, please join me in presenting the award for this month's board recognition. Tonight, we would like to recognize excellence in leadership. The Delaware Association of School Administrators has named Cab Calloway School of the Arts Dean Anthony Gray Bolden, the twenty twenty five Delaware Principal of the Year, recognizing his outstanding leadership and commitment to excellence in education. Dean Bolden is currently in his fourth year at Cab and his tenth year in Red Clay Consolidated School District, bringing a total of twenty-four years of experience in education. Throughout his career, Dean Bolden has taught four content areas as special education teacher, served as dean of students, and held leadership roles as assistant principal and principal. Join us in congratulating Dean Anthony Gray Bolden on this well-deserved honor. Move up again, Jose. Let's give Dean Bolden another round of applause.
Congratulations, Dean Bolden, and thank you for your service. We now move on to public comment. The Red Clay School Board appreciates any member of the community who would like to make a public comment. According to Board Policy two thousand and six, the Red Clay School Board allocates thirty minutes of public commentary. Each person may have up to three minutes to address the board, and this time may not be transferred to or from another speaker. The board generally does not respond directly to a speaker. The board meeting is not an appropriate forum to raise complaints or concerns about individual employees. Upon request, the superintendent shall provide the speaker with the procedure for submitting such complaints or concerns. The order of the speakers is listed on the screen. As you see your name, please make your way to a seat near the podium, or if you are virtual, unmute when called to respect the time of anyone present tonight. When you speak, please state your name and organization if you were speaking on its behalf and the topic of your comment. There is a timer on the screen that will turn on when you have one minute left. It will turn yellow with thirty seconds left and flash in red when your three minutes are over. I will thank you for your comments and call on the next speaker. If we could please begin with Charles Lockerman. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Charles Lockerman. I'm speaking with Friends of AI as an advocate for AI. It's well-known that this school is in need of help and changes the zone feeder patterns to strengthen the AI enrollment. I mean, you can't have Dickinson and McCain thriving at a thousand students and that's optimal numbers. But the disparity is right in front of you and AI is only at a, at five hundred and fifty students. And like a house that has needs that need to be updated due to building code changes, the Red Clay feeder pattern zones are outdated and no longer reflect equal distribution of registered students within all district schools. So a consolidated district would have equal dispersion and right now the numbers say we don't have that. There's also been rumblings in the past couple of months of closing AI. And I was wondering if you, any of you could speak to that because that would be a travesty. The legacy of AI, both as a historical school and also bearing the name DuPont, who is, you know, you can't say Delaware history without DuPont being mentioned. They need to be carried on. And that's why I'm here today because there's a five-year plan to create a charter school Wilmington, but how will that affect our middle schools? How does that affect the other patterns? So like I said, the, the numbers tell the story here. The zone distribution, the feeder patterns outdated, it's not distributing equally to all the schools within the district. And to be consolidated, you need equal distribution. So please, like I said, the, the numbers tell the story here. The zone distribution, the feeder patterns outdated, it's not distributing equally to all the schools within the district. And to be consolidated, you need equal distribution.
We have a playback. No, okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a ventriloquist. I'm not, I'm, I'm not that skilled.
I thought you were working some magic out there.
The only magic I want to work is to get AI back to seven hundred to a thousand students and help those students in any way they need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Steven Fackenthal.
On Zoom.
On Zoom. Steven, if you could please unmute.
Good evening, board. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. My, my name is Steven Fackenthal, music teacher at Ritchie Elementary and president of the Red Clay Education Association. I come before you this evening to speak about staffing and particular reassignment and a few late recognition weeks. It's reassignment season. You've heard me speak about this in the past, so I'll keep it brief. Reassignments for organizational need should only be used when absolutely necessary. Moving educators who have a track record of success in their position and have no desire to move should not be an option unless absolutely necessary. And other avenues such as the VT process has been used to fill vacancies. I would also challenge staff members to push back on their admin when they feel this is done for no good reason. Ask them to show their cards and tell you specifically why a move is being made. I would have said this last month, but I was making a pizza and time slipped as the cheese was melting. Thank you to every single school counselor in our district. They are paramount in the success of our students. School counselors work with students to help address academic concerns, career options, social emotional skills, and so much more. I'd like to emphasize the extra responsibilities not directly associated with their profession. For example, being part of their school specials or unified arts schedule, doing five oh four responsibilities, or test preparation, even though the American School Counselors Association explicitly states, school counselors should not include clerical, uh, should not include clerical or administrative activities that take them away from implementing a school counseling program. Let them work their magic. As it is music in our schools month, I like to share how music educators are some of the most creative, hardworking, and engaging folks in our buildings. Always strive to instill in our students lifelong love of music. We also build lifelong skills such as perseverance, dedication, and collaboration. Jason Kelsey talks about this a lot. Thank you to all the fabulous music educators who work so hard for their students. Lastly, on behalf of RCA, I'd like to thank all of our school social workers who play an essential role in supporting students' social, social, emotional, and academic development. They connect and provide essential resources, counseling, and crisis intervention, fostering a positive school environment that promotes well-being. Earlier this month was dedicated to them, and they are absolutely essential to the growth of our students. Thank you to all Red Clay social workers for everything you do. Dr. Green, I'm not sure how you keep track of every single recognition week, but I know Ms. Stevens is, is an amazing rock star, so I'm giving her the credit. Thank you again, board. Enjoy your night.
Way to go, Ms. Stevens.
Up next, we have Jennifer Howard. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, board. I just wanted to say that, um, first of all, Mr. Fackenthal's, um, pizza cheese melting messed up my public comment last week too, or last month, as I wasn't ready. All right. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Green. In these very divided times, one thing we can all agree on is that every child deserves a quality K-12 education that prepares them for long-term success. Today, I attended a webinar hosted by Ed Trust and the Alliance for Resource, Resource Equity, where I learned about the harmful impact of school vouchers on our public education system. While some argue that vouchers offer more educational choice, the reality is that they don't expand opportunities for all students. Instead, they provide more options for schools while hurting students and communities. Unfortunately, many states are considering voucher bills this year. School vouchers divert critical funds from public schools, weakening the systems that serve as the backbone of our community. Studies have shown that students in voucher programs perform worse on standardized tests compared to their peers in public schools. Vouchers also lack accountability. Private schools accepting public funds aren't held to the same standards as public schools, making it difficult to ensure that funds are used effectively. Additionally, vouchers often don't cover the full cost of the private school tuition, leaving lower-income families to cover the gap. Private schools also have selective admissions policies, often excluding students based on factors like disability, religion, or academic performance. Students with specialized needs in particular are often turned away from private schools entirely or forced to pay for any additional costs associated with their education. Most concerning, voucher programs increase segregation. Historically, vouchers were introduced after the Brown versus Board of Education decision. Rooted in racism, vouchers were created to allow white families to bypass desegregation mandates, and they continue to deepen socioeconomic and racial divides today. Public schools bring children together from diverse backgrounds, but vouchers allow wealthier families to leave public schools further fragmenting communities. While families may want more choices, vouchers don't provoke, provide real choices for all. A strong public education system is vital to our democracy, and our focus should remain on strengthening public schools to ensure that every child, regardless of background, has access to a high-quality education. For these reasons, I wanted to urge the board to reaffirm its commitment to public schools by adopting a resolution that opposes school vouchers, as was recommended today in the webinar I was on. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Martin A. Wilson, Senior. Good evening and welcome.
Good to be here.
Speak into the mic.
The mic.
There you go.
Just pull it out the stands.
There you go.
Sound like I'm, look like I'm in church now. Uh, good evening, brothers and sisters. It's my esteemed members of the Red Clay community and my beloved Wilmington family. I stand before you today humble and proud as candidate for reelection to Red Clay School Board. Name is Martin Wilson, Senior. I am honored to share my vision for our children and our schools. Born in the heart of Wilmington in nineteen fifty-five, I have witnessed our city grow and evolve. I carry with me the wisdom of our past and a steadfast vision for our future. As a lifelong advocate for our children, I understand the challenges they face and the immense potential they hold. I believe that every child, regardless of their background, deserves access to great, to a great education and a safe environment where they can thrive. Education is the cornerstone of our community. It is the key that unlocks doors and create opportunities for our future leaders. During my time on the Red Clay School Board, I has, I have dedicated myself to ensuring that our schools are not just places of learning, but sanctuaries of hope and growth. I've fought tirelessly for resources that support our teachers and champion programs that inspire our students to reach for the stars. Safely in our schools is paramount. We know that our children cannot learn and grow if they do not feel safe. I have prioritized safety measures that not only protect our students, but also foster a nutrient environment where they can flourish. I understand that a child's education start with their well-being. When our children feel safe, they can focus on what truly matters: learning, growing, and becoming the leaders of tomorrow. I stand for all kids. I believe in the power of diversity and inclusion, advocating for programs that celebrate the rich tapestry of our community. Our differences make us stronger. And I fight for equity in our schools so that every child has a fair chance to succeed. Let us not forget the importance of community involvement. I have constantly encouraged parents, guardians, and community members to engage in our schools. I believe that education is a partnership, one that requires.
If we just bring your comments, we're closed.
Okay, we can do that. Let us rally behind our leader, and that's Dr. Darrell Green. He's dedicated his life for the children as myself. So I would thank you in advance to consider me in upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from our superintendent, Dr. Green, who will introduce our student representative, Jesus Lopez Rico, from Thomas McCain High School, and provide his superintendent's report.
Good evening. Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board, those who are joining us here in the Richardson Park Auditorium, and those who are joining us online. Uh, obviously, before I begin my presentation, I have the proud privilege to introduce our student representative. We missed him last month. I do, it was due to weather. It was weather-related last month, so we have Jose Lopez Rico here from the McCain Highlanders to share, um, what's going on in Highlander Nation, up in the Highlands. And so Jose, Jesus, excuse me. Welcome, and glory is yours.
Good, good evening, everyone. My name's Jesus Lopez Rico, and I'm a senior at Thomas McCain High School. I'm involved in Best Buddies, Unified Track, gaming club, and many more. Um, I would like to tell you all about the wonderful things that we have to offer here at Thomas McCain High School, many of which I have participated in. Although we are a traditional high school, we are also known for our tremendous or strong CTE pathways. Our current pathways are early childhood, K-12 academy, animal science, plant science, manufacturing engineering technology, marketing communication, and many more. Oh, sorry. These programs help students acquire certifications that will help them get hired and make more money in high school indirectly after. Students can also participate in work-based learning, opportunities and internships in their chosen field. One CTE event that I would like to highlight is our annual Plant Cell that is, that our plant science program puts on. This year, it is April twenty-sixth to May third, and it is our fifty, fiftieth plant cell that we've hosted. These plants have been planted and grown completely by our own students in our greenhouse, and our students work at the plant cell for the week. This cell helps us raise money for the pathway and activity supplies we need for the upcoming year. Please come out and support our plant science program from nine AM to four PM, any day from April twenty-sixth to May third. Another recent addition to McCain is our school store, the McCain Brew and Bake. The Brew and Bake offers students opportunities to practice skills in order to become successful and jobs, careers, or vocational training after high school. Students are able to practice inventory management, product design, customer service, and store maintenance. Our ABBID program provides top-tier college information and application support to our students like myself. I have been a member of the ABBID program for all my four years of high school. It provides unique opportunities that expose students to culture and arts, creates cohorts of support between classes using student mentoring and prepare students for college and career readiness through tutorology, increased rigor in the ABBID system. McCain has many sports during the fall, winter, and spring season, including unified sports options as well. I would like to highlight our wrestling program, who were Blue Hen Flight B Conference champions and went fourteen to one on the season. We are so proud of their accomplishments this season. At Thomas McCain High School, we have mini clubs and after-school activities to participate in. Our clubs are based on student interests, entrance, interests, and some of the most popular clubs are the gaming, Latin dance, art, theater, FFA, drone soccer, and creative writing clubs. Our FFA recently held a Spirit Week for National FFA Week and are currently selling homemade wild bird feeders made from students. One club that I am extremely proud to be involved in is our Unified Champion Best Buddies Club. I currently serve as president, and I have been part of it, the club since my freshman year. This club meets every Friday during advisory, and we partner with students in the Meadowwood and Autis Program to provide one-to-one friendships with students with ADD. This year, we have about eighty students in our club. We participate in activities such as bingo, gingerbread decorating, puzzle making, and we host the Spread the Word Week. We also host the Best Buddies Buddy Ball, which is a statewide dance for all Best Buddies participants. One event that we hold annually at McCain is the Special Olympics Unified Bocce Tournament. We serve as the referees for the event as well as having multiple teams participating. This year, we had twenty-eight quarts of three teams each, coming from seven different schools in Red Clay. Students of all abilities practice in the fall leading up to the competition day and then complete an around robin-style tournament. This year, our new Unified PE class played in the tournament while the members of, of our Unified Champion Program Best Buddies Club served as referees, along with members of our National Honor Society, ABBID Program, and athlete leaders. Another event I am proud to talk about is our Special Olympics Polar Bear Plunge Team. This is the tenth year that McCain has chosen to jump in the ocean in February to raise money and awareness for Special Olympics Delaware. This year, McCain and thirty-seven plungers that included students, staff, alumni, and friends, and we raised over twelve thousand dollars in two hundred and eighty-five. One special thing to note is that we also had staff from the Early Years Program and the Meadowwood Program plunging with us. Here are a few upcoming events that I would like you all to come, which are Red Clay District Art Show, which is tomorrow, Rock Your Socks Day, which is March twenty-first, Jazz Night, March twenty-sixth, Plant Cell, April twenty-sixth to May third, Special Olympic, Special Olympic Unified Soccer Tournament, May first, Prom twenty twenty-five, May sixteen, ABBID Field Day, Spring Concert, May twenty, twenty-second, Senior Awards, Senior Pink Link, Senior Field Trip, May-June, and Graduation, June seventh. And thank you so much for listening to my presentation, and let me know if you have any questions. And as we like to say at McCain, it's great to be a Highlander.
You can exhale now, Jesus. Wonderful job. So you, just, board members, any questions?
I just wanted to say congratulations on, um, the fundraiser that you have for the polar bear plunge. I think that, um, one of our board members can relate to that experience.
You gotta do over the edge.
Thank you.
And before Jesus, anyone has any other questions, I want to acknowledge Ms. Holly Schnitzer, who is a dynamic educator at McCain who does a lot beyond her day-to-day. So when we talk about best buddies, when we talk about engagement with the Special Olympics, all of the inclusive work and things that happen, it takes a strong leader, a dedicated staff member, cheerleader coach. I mean, she's everything over there. So I just want to acknowledge her. She came with Jesus tonight. So I think it's worth acknowledging.
I have one question. So what do you want to do after your experience at McCain?
Um, I want to become an animal activist.
Well, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you, Jesus. And I know, again, we don't want to keep you all night. You're more than welcome to stay, but if not, feel free to go ahead and leave.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
And so in keeping with, actually, springboard from Jesus's presentation, my cover photo actually captures last Friday, which was spreading the word, focused on inclusive, inclusion practices. And I know it was celebrated across the district, which supports Special Olympics and Best Buddies. And so by taking the pledge to spread the word, individuals are stepping into a role of a leader committed to shaping more inclusive world. I think more so now than ever, we need to embrace inclusion and inclusive practices. And so for those who take the pledge, they signify a powerful stance against derogatory language targeted at individuals with intellectual disabilities. Their commitment calls for change, inspiring others to follow suit and joining the collective effort to eliminate discriminatory language. Together, we can create a society where everyone is valued, celebrated, and free from impactful, the impact of harmful stereotypes. There were over 880,000 plus pledges, 6,000 schools plus schools participating in over 80 different countries. And my cover photo are from the Linda Hill Lions as they show off their inclusion shirts that everyone across the district who participated in wore last week. We also want to take this opportunity to celebrate our Teachers of the Year, Champions of Excellence and Inspiration. Today, we proudly celebrate the many names from across all of Red Clay schools. I will not name them all, but again, they're in my presentation, and a lot of our schools have done their due diligence to highlight, celebrate. And we, again, as the district level, on behalf of myself and the board, just acknowledge, again, those Champions of Excellence and Inspiration throughout Red Clay. They're the heart of our schools. They're the architects of student success and the champions of excellence in education. Now, these outstanding educators embody passion, dedication, and unwavering commitment to nurturing the minds and spirits of our students. And so I think we can all sit here in this space as adults, knowing that we had a impactful teacher, such as our Teachers of the Year, who put us on the platform to success that we experience today. So again, thank you to all of the wonderful teachers who have been selected by their peers and at their respective building level. Now, the process goes on to the District Teacher of the Year, who will then go on to represent the district at the State Teacher of the Year competition. We want to give a shout out to HB Middle School, HB DuPont Middle School, and the 2025 Delaware Science Olympiad State Champions. Our dedicated students demonstrated exceptional scientific prowess, securing the state title through outstanding performance across a wide range of events. We're incredibly proud of the accomplishments and look forward to them representing Delaware at the national competition in Nebraska. So congratulations to the HB DuPont students and staff volunteers, because, you know, Science Olympiad is definitely a team sport and requires a lot of advocacy and support for our students to shine. So thank you to everyone who support, who has continued to support our state champions, and best of luck as you take your skills to Nebraska. Want to highlight, there's an organization, NAFIPA, which is held in DC, and several Red Clay educators receive some national recognition. We want to applaud Ms. Kendra Todd Dixon, a principal at the Conrad Schools of Science, Dean Anthony Bolden, who is also our 2025 Delaware Principal of the Year, Mr. Jason Bastianelli, Ms. Michelle Craig, and Ms. Carolina Beck, who are in our MLL office. The Red Clay team consisting of the individuals who I just named were proudly recognized with Leadership Awards at the National Association of Federal Education Program Administrators Conference in Washington, DC for their dedication and contributions to federal education program. Red Clay's Director of Federal Programs, Delaware NAFIPA Board Member, Mr. Michael Simmons, was also present to accompany and support our awardees and for their recognition. So again, thank you to Mr. Simmons, who's actually back there too, who heads up our federal program. It goes without saying that, you know, again, in this current climate, the resources that we get from our federal program in Red Clay, we're thankful that they're well-managed and are being directed to where the need is across the district. We want to give a shout out to Michelle McCleary, who is the School Counselor of the Year finalist. And so she will be representing Red Clay as one of three finalists for Delaware School Counselor of the Year Award. The winner will be announced at the Delaware School Counselor Association Spring Conference in April. So let's get behind Ms. McCleary over there at the Cook Cardinals and help her spread her wings and bring that School Counselor of the Year Award home back to Red Clay Consolidated School District. We were fortunate enough within the past year to also have School Counselor of the Year, Kristen I, who is over at Anna P. Moat Elementary School. So as Mr. Fackenthal shared, you know, our school counselors across the district do amazing work, and we're excited to have, not only get recognized in the district, but at the state level as they support students, again, throughout our schools. Just highlighting some academic focus in terms of our Secondary Literacy Academy. On February 24th, Red Clay welcomed educators from neighboring districts and charter schools for the third cohort, the CELA partnership with the Department of Education. This professional learning opportunity connected to the science of reading with best practices for interdisciplinary instruction while addressing unique operational demands of secondary schools. We often know that, you know, students who want to expound upon their literacy development, but also students who may need additional support. It really allows our teachers to get that interdisciplinary, to really look at literacy across various subject areas. And so our Red Clay team engaged in a meaningful discussion to build shared understanding of the critical role of literacy that literacy plays in student success. And the goal is to build common understanding of meaning of literacy for all students by all educators, not just those who are teaching ELA or, you know, English Language or Reading, but for across various subject areas, again, to look at that integration. We're also working to empower our young Delawareans. Red Clay students are actively engaged in analyzing primary sources, fostering critical thinking, and historical inquiry that, thanks to funding from the Library of Congress grant, educators from Joseph E. Johnson Elementary, Warner Elementary, William C. Lewis Through Language Immersion, and Shortridge Academy participated in three professional learning sessions that focused on enhancing social studies instruction. This project is engaging teachers of K-3 students, kindergarten to third-grade students, and professional learning to strengthen utilizing primary sources from the Library of Congress and the Delaware Historical Society. And so that when they're not defaulting to TikTok for their information, they're going straight to sources to get that. And there are lots of benefits in working with the Library of Congress through their digitized primary sources, which includes, you know, photographs, maps, manuscripts, letters, oral histories, and other recordings. And so those are opportunities, again, not just to make learning a literary event, but it actually provides them with additional opportunities to look at different modalities of learning. And then also working with the Delaware Historical Society, which has school archives, again, historical maps, census data, and the application supports our educators through curriculum development, broader community engagement, knowing who we serve and what's happening. And then also from a leadership and policy work, you know, for students to really understand how the world works. Who knows, we're probably cultivating the next Red Clay school. The board member obviously is sitting within our school. So we're also preparing graduates for the future. Jesus mentioned work-based learning opportunities. So we're looking at workforce opportunities, looking to increase the percentage of graduates earning work-based learning credits. A lot of times, our students can have the opportunity upon completion of high school, not only to graduate with the high school diploma, but also earn credentials or credits within respective industries. That could be something like Cisco Certification or other things that students will have access to. So two of our middle schools, Alexisai DuPont Middle School and Stanton, are involved in a two-year pilot project for the statewide community of practice. This work better aligns our middle school student experiences with our high school programming options. And so when we talk about career technical ed, where do you start that process of, well, I may be interested in this, but at least helping our students have a clear focus with the many career pathways that we offer, whether they can earn, again, credentials, certifications, or additional college credits through work-based learning or their CTE pathways to go on to a career and or college. Pre-K registration, the EYP choice window is now open for the 2025-2026 school year through April 26th. So the EYP, again, EYP for our preschool program. Thank you to all of our staff members, support staff members. Again, I truly encourage our board members, if you have time, please go and visit one of the early learning sites. I know Ms. Sanders, early on, went to each of those sites. It's amazing the amount of work that our staff do within our early learning centers from providing related services, supporting itinerant services to early learning sites, not only in the district, but throughout the community for a lot of our community-based programming. And so, again, Red Clay serves as the hub, particularly for Newcastle County as it relates to our Early Years Program. So if anyone is interested, please direct them to that. March, there's a lot of recognition and appreciation going on. And I know Mr. Fackenthal mentioned something while the cheese was melting with his pizza. I'm not quite sure what he was sharing at that moment, but we honored National STEM Week this month. It's National Nutrition Month, March Music in our Schools Month. We had Employee Appreciation Day, as I just shared in my cover photo, spread the word for inclusion. March is Women's History Month, and we have a nice little teaser after I get to the next slide. It's Emotional Learning Week. So there are a lot that goes on in the month of March. So thank you to our social workers, to our school counselors, to our maintenance workers, because we also have Maintenance Appreciation Day. It's the National Athletic Training Month. All of those various aspects of people who add value to our community and support our students and support the school community. So thank you to everyone who continues to not only be honored this month, but support the efforts of Red Clay. And so with this being Women's History Month, want to acknowledge, and this came from the vision of one of our board members, and with the help of Mr. Mark Pruitt and Mr. Pat G. Nowl over at, he's a phys ed, phys ed teacher at Anna P. Moat, working with a lot of parents. It's Jenny Howard, who spoke during public comment, was a parent ambassador. There were several other parent ambassadors who came to put together the inaugural Girls Wrestle Round for female wrestlers. Female wrestling is one of the fastest-growing sports across the nation, and Red Clay can proudly put a flag in the ground to say that we did something for the state of Delaware that hasn't been done before. And I want to thank our communications department for capturing that moment. And so if we could play the teaser.
To the mat.
Redefining what be an insult.
We're here to show you what it really means to wrestle like a girl.
Women have always fought for what is right.
Now we're bringing that fight to the mat.
Redefining what it means to fight like a girl.
We are strong.
We are fierce.
And we are unstoppable.
Wrestling is about heart, discipline, and resilience.
It's about something bigger. So when someone says, "You fight like a girl," we take it as a compliment. Because we're redefining what it means to fight like a girl.
Join us.
Wrestle like a girl. Make history with us. We are Red Clay, and we're just getting started.
So again, we celebrate the unstoppable athletes who inspire change and make history, one match at a time, our female wrestlers. Please come and join us, anyone who you may know who wants to join the Red Clay team for our annual Career Fair, which will be held Saturday, April 20, excuse me, Saturday, April 12th, 2025, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Calhoun School of the Arts. Recruiting all positions, teachers, pair professionals, bus drivers, nutrition services, custodial services, secretaries, facilities, and many more. Again, join us at our annual Red Clay Career Fair, April 12th, at the Calhoun School of the Arts. And then kindergarten registration is also remains open, so feel free to visit one of the elementary schools on April 30th. Unlock your child's bright future. Enroll early. Again, kindergarten open houses will be April 30th from 4:45 to 6:00 p.m. across Red Clay. On behalf of the Red Clay Educational Foundation, our annual golf tournament will take place on Monday, June 16th, at the Newark Country Club. Last year was a sold-out event. So for those who enjoy golf, whether you have a good game or you just want to get out there with awesome, the Early Birth Special runs through the end of this month, March 30th. So again, it is a shotgun start. Registration continental breakfast will be provided, snacks and beverages on the course, barbecue dinner awards, and an auction. So again, save the date for the 11th Annual Red Clay Education Foundation Golf Tournament to be held Monday, June 16th, at Newark Country Club. The next WLC meeting will be April 15th. I know initially we said Maurice Pritchard Senior Academy, but we need to make sure, because for the past two meetings, we hosted it in Red Clay at the Red Clay Boardroom. So we will make sure that that location for the in-person option is noticed. But the WLC Women's Learning Collaborative Staff publicly notices that meeting, but we'll make sure the location is also confirmed. And that concludes my superintendent report for this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. I will now take comments.
I just wanted to say that was an excellent video. It looked like a real commercial on TV. We should really, you know, showcase that. We could put it on commercial.
We have talent in the district.
Yeah, very nice. I agree. And also, we had a state champion, two-time state champion from Conrad on that video. Angel from Conrad, she's wrestled last night in our Senior Classic and Girls Showcase against Southeast Pennsylvania. She did very well. So we have some great talent here in our district, and I'm proud of Red Clay for what they're doing with women's wrestling. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you.
We now move on to presentations. We will now have a presentation on Policy 9004, the Advisory Committee to the Board, presented by Dr. Huber Moll. Good evening.
Good evening. We're here to present a draft of revisions for 9004. So I'm going to highlight those. It's also in Board Docs where it's color-coded with the additions and subtractions. Some of the changes are that we're at, Board creates a committee by approving a charge statement. We also gave some additional guidance and directions on how that committee is going to work, things such as goals, deliverables, scope of responsibilities, FOI obligations, timelines, length of service. We clarified that the superintendent designates a district administrator as the committee chair. We have the addition of three board members to committees. The committees can only be ended by action of the board, and the claims of staff members are by the superintendent and don't require board approval. Two additional items that we discussed. One is requesting the board provide a charge statement for the Board Policy Committee. And the second, that there was not agreement on how this dissolve or sunset one of our board committees. So we are passing that discussion on to the board to resolve. And the next meeting is April 2nd, 5 o'clock at the district office. So I know, I just want to thank the committee members for their engagement, working through that process. It's never an easy process when, you know, folks come in with varying perspectives and different understandings. But the last meeting that I had the opportunity to engage with the committee members, there was a clear focus and I think consensus and agreement in terms of a process moving forward. So thank you to not just the district staff, but more importantly, our community and the members who serve on that policy committee. So I just wanted to put that out in public.
I had a question. Dr. Moll, so I know that when we propose policies, we usually send it out to the public and we use that Google Forum doc. Did we receive any Google Forum doc feedback from?
It'll go up tomorrow as a draft on the Board Policy page, and there's an email address for people to send their feedback or they can call the district. And also attend April 2nd if they would like, and public comment and...
Have we received anything thus far?
It goes up tomorrow.
Okay, okay, until it goes up. That's great. Excellent. That's the only question. Any other questions?
I have a question. I still get a little confused about the word Advisory Committee to the Board, because it is a board committee. So if we look into the NSBA handbook, there's different types of committees. And I just, I just think it's a little misleading to say an Advisory Committee to the Board when it's actually a committee in this case. a committee that the board would like to erect or like to maintain. So this, the word advisory, it's a nuance, but that was just, that's my understanding. Yes, the people on the committee will advise the board, but the board is also part of those committees. So is it a board committee? Is it a standing committee? Is it a, you know, those, those things I think are important to articulate.
If I can say something, we, there are definitions we're going to discuss at the next meeting about those different committees, and we, there was a suggestion to take advisory off and just make it committees of the board. We'll discuss that at our next meeting, I do believe. But a couple of things I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Dr. Green for sitting in on the last meeting, which helped us refocus on our task for policy review and revision. I think that helped a lot. We had a great session with cooperation, collaboration, work committee. We made tremendous progress. We've been talking about this for two years now, this particular policy, and I think we're making a great headway. Still work to be done. We're going to work on in April. And kudos to our public members who bring new ideas, a fresh set of eyes, help us make policy revision the best it can be. And thank you to those public members.
So I have something I'd like to say, because I wanted to address, I wanted to address all board committees are advisory, because the action remains with the board. So the board committees are committees that are created by the board to look into a particular issue, to come back to the board and advise the board, but the action still remains with the board. So I don't know that it needs, I don't know that the policy needs to say advisory committees to the board. It could just say board committees, but by definition, the committees, that, all the responsibility remains with the board. They look into certain issues that the board has determined to come back and give advice to the board. So that's what I would say.
Dr. Brumal, just make note of that advisory, and we'll make sure again that next month, next meeting.
I just have a question. Are we voting on this next, next month? Because I just heard Mr. Leonard say there's going to be more information about types of committees, so I'm a little confused. Is this, this is the first read, right? Put the first read out, but this is kind of where we would ask our questions and then be able to be ready to vote next month. And so I just think it's important to get any of those things out now so that we're not belaboring that vote yea or nay next month. And I agree, I just think that, I think it's entitled a little, we can tweak the title, but I do want to point out that in any organization that you have a board, that you have committees, there are different types of committees. And so if we're going to just have one type, that's fine, but it needs to be articulated, whether it's a standing committee that we're talking about, which is, which, when I read this, that's what it comes out to be, a standing committee until resolved, absolved, dissolved. And so I just, I think it's important, because if you move from, we, you know, we'll go to NSBA and they'll talk about these things, and I want us to be well-informed. So it's a nuance, you know, it's not against anything in the policy, but just maybe, maybe going through it with a fine-tooth comb with our English teachers or someone that can really help to articulate that type of committee, because you can have an ad hoc committee, you can have a task force, those are types of committees. And so when we continue to go and some of us will be off the board, I think it's important to have clarity around that. That's because we've been talking about this for at least a couple of years. And so this is the time, if we're going to revise this, this document, I think we should have the most clarity as possible.
Well, that's why we, when you look at the charge statement, the charge statement is going to create the length of, it's, one of the, one of the components is, how long will this committee exist? So that creates it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you understand what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not disputing anything about the function of the committee or, or how it's enacted. I'm saying that there's entitled a certain type of committee, because we can have an ad hoc, we can have an appointed, we can have lots of different types of committee, then I just want us to be clear if this is one type that we're talking about.
So if it may, it probably would benefit us, got in good, good discussions that just have board members, if you have individual feedback, just direct it to Dr. Brumal, so that way that the committee can gather that feedback per your discussion here and have that substantive conversation on both of your points, right, to determine whether or not it's an advisory, how does that language impact people's understanding of it, and then very, again, delineating between if we need to look at different.
I just want to clarify that this first reading, does that mean the next meeting we're voting on this? Because I, there was a lot of back and forth this week with a lot of the committee members, that maybe that's not the time for the first reading, if that's the way it is. Because we do have some other things to talk about, the title being one. So is that, I don't understand, first reading, then next meeting we vote on it? Is that the understanding we have?
That was the original intent.
If you don't have a final draft, I mean, I guess you would.
I don't think we're running.
So I would recommend that you take the feedback of all board members per the discussion that you're currently having, allow that to go back to the committee, and then the committee brings a final draft for a first reading back next month, which you can then parse out again if you feel like there's other things that need to be included, and then be prepared to go into, I guess, May at that point, and then that way you can start a new cycle with, with the, because otherwise the committees will continue to function as they are. So it's not impeding the work, but it's just a matter of allowing the board there.
Dr. Green, I think that's, I mean, I don't want to belabor it, then everybody wants to go home, but part of the reason why we have this problem is because we're not talking about it in public session, and we're not getting our thoughts out and articulating what we don't understand or what we do understand. And this has come up to this board too many times. So it's supposed to go to vote, that's the process. We, we have a presentation on it, they put it up for first reading. We don't really do the second reading, right? We vote on it next meeting.
Yes, unless there's some updates that I need to share with the board and typically moves forward.
Yeah. So we, so is it accurate to say we don't do second readings?
It's just been the terminology that we've used as far as, it's been posted, shared with the community.
Posted to see what it is now and then post the changes.
Correct.
Okay, that's the second read. Okay. So, Mr. Leonard, I just think that the, I think that the committee has enough information to come with the draft. I'm not going to belabor the vote because of a word of advisory or whatever, but I just think that if anybody has any questions or concerns, it's time to talk about it. So we're not talking about it in the middle of the vote.
I agree with that, and you had a valid point with the defining the different types of committees. And that was a suggestion, but we ran out of time last, in our last session. So I think that will be discussed along with the title of this and other things that we have on our agenda. We didn't quite get to the end, because the meeting went longer than we thought.
And we could just call it Standing Committee and move on. I'm just saying, because it's, it is one type. What type is it? That's my question. Because later on, somebody could say, well, I want to create an ad hoc committee on this issue. Well, these are the, according to this document, this is how committees are formed, period. So it's one type of committee. There's no other types tasked, like, all those other things don't count. This is the board committee. The district can make committees, but the only type, based on this document, the only type of committee we can make is the one that this is described here. Because if it was a different type of committee that we could make, it would have a different definition and different processes and procedures.
I don't, I don't think that's accurate.
It is. You can look at an NSBA.
No, I don't think it is accurate, because we've gotten a lot of advice from NSBA people. There is, the, the function of a board is, there is a board committee, and the function of the board committee is to advise the board, and you can create it, and you should create it, to exist for a certain period of time. We've had this discussion.
Yeah, I'm not going to argue it. I can bring you the book next time, but that's my question, and we can vote on it. I mean, we're voting on it next month. This is not a thing we're going to continue to belabor. We've talked about this way too much.
I understand.
Well, I don't know that we are voting on it next month. Sounded like we may not be.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Brumal. We now move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session held on February 12, 2025?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Ms. Thompson, do I have a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. The motion has been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the executive session held on February 12, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular session held on February 12, 2025?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. The motion has been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the regular session held on February 12, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the Board Workshop School Climate and Discipline held on March 11, 2025?
So moved, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. The motion has been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the Board Workshop School Climate and Discipline held on March 11, 2025. Any discussion?
So moved. I mean.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We now move on to action item. Is there, is there a motion to approve the first recommendation?
So Mr. Matthews is on a roll. I keep telling him he could be a voiceover for prescription drug commercial. He is the fine print speed reader. I appreciate that. So it, action item, action item A, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the 2025-2025 School Year Calendar, excuse me, 2025-2026 School Year Calendar as submitted.
Is there a motion?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. The motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? And are we all okay just with a voice call vote?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Action item B, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approve the sole source contract on behalf of the Lincoln Center.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Action item C, and I know this is somewhat confusing, so we will kind of make sure that we explain this clearly. It is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education rescind Board Policy 4,005.1A around sexual harassment grievous process that should apply to the conduct occurring on August 1 and after. And so what I will give a general explanation, the board previously approved a, the policy back in, on December 16, 2020. And as a result of the presidential election and change in April of 2024, the US Department of Education issued updated Title IX regulations aimed at expanding protections against sexual discrimination. These regulations broaden the definition of sexual harassment and modify grievous procedures for educational institutions. However, on January 9, the federal judge in the Eastern District of Kentucky vacated the 2024 regulations nationwide, which basically required the adjustments that the board made for 4,005.1A now goes back to the original policy, because that broadened language was basically ruled out of Title IX. So Title IX, as an essence change, so our policies need to be aligned with federal guidelines.
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to say as a school board member, I'm committed to protecting all students and honoring the rich diversity of our schools. I believe in ensuring equitable opportunities, access to robust learning experiences, and fostering a school community where every individual is valued as a key and important member. And I will continue to advocate and stand for justice, championing, championing the future of our schools and our community.
Thank you, Dr. Neesmith. Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So that moves us to action consent. Does anything need to be removed from the action consent before, the consent item, before we move on? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now move on to school board committee reports. First, we have Board Policy Review Committee. Do we have any, anyone who would like to share?
Well, the three of us were there. Mr. Leonard, Ms. Sanders, and I were all there. We, there was a lot of discuss, it was a good meeting, there was a lot of discussion, and we were, it, it appeared to me that we were pretty much all in agreement with some issues still to discuss. And Dr. Brumal, I think, accurately characterized it. So I don't know that there's more to say, but the meeting, there's another meeting April 2 of 2005.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Up next, we have CFRC, Community Financial Review Committee. Do we have a report?
Yeah, I do. I was unable to attend, and I think Dr. Neesmith was unable to attend because we were in the board workshop, but I do have some minutes. There was a tax reassessment update from Dr. Ammon. The Red Clay reassessment average was 361% higher than the values from last assessment. The commercial properties have not seen as high an increase in reassessment as residential properties had. He shed some issues related to the senior property assessment value exemption and the Newcastle County tax pool. That legislate, needs legislative action. The CFRC, Red Clay will present a new tax rate once the assessed, reassessed values go into place. So the tax rate does not stay the same. That will be, that will change based on the, we're not going to collect more money, so it's going to, the tax rate changes. On the expenditure report, we're 67% through the school year. Revenue is at almost 90%, and expenditures at 65%. So we're in a really pretty good situation. We thoroughly reviewed the expenditures that were determined to be 70% or a budget or more, and we carefully monitor those, and Dr. Ammon is really good about that. There are no public comments. The next meeting is April 8 at 6:00 p.m. hybrid in the District Office Boardroom and on Zoom.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Up next, we have DSBA. Do we have a report? Mr. Wilson?
DSBA?
Yeah.
Okay, I had put the minutes in from the DSBA, but the weather was so bad, I didn't attend. I was, it was just hard, it was raining cats and dogs. It was terrible. So I actually didn't attend. The minutes are from the doctor, that Mr. Toll put together are in Board Docs. And it, as I perused them, I don't know that there was anything that had to be commented upon other than the fact that there's referenda that are going on. I know Smyrna's just failed, I believe.
Smyrna's just failed, and Indian Rivers is actually tomorrow.
Yeah.
The weather didn't.
So, and, and, yeah, the referendum area is not going great at the moment. And Mr. Toll is on the, the Public Education, the, the.
Funding Public Education Funding Commission.
Yeah, PEC, and they're continuing to work on that. So I don't know that there's anything else that has to be reported on in here, but it is in Board Docs for people to look at.
Thank you. Up next, we have the Facility Committee. I attended with Mr. Wilson and Susan Sander. Would either of you like to give a brief overview?
We had an ESCO update, interior lighting replacement completed at all 25 schools. But one of the biggest things that we confronted was the water testing, drinking water testing. The committee reviewed three future testing options for Red Clay. The selected approach is to test 20% of randomly selected consumption points annually across all schools. All consumption points in that location will be tested if any test results show elevated levels. This method follows the district approach when students return to in-person learning post-COVID. So we have a lot of things coming up. We're working on our major capital update. And the first round of schools are currently under contract with design teams. Final reviews are in step, facility charge statement, we're working on that. And if you want to look at the minutes, you can follow it on the district website.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Sanders, anything to add?
Um, nothing, other than the random testing we decided to review within a five-year period to see if that really is the most effective use of the funding that we have to test our water. So in a couple of years, we'll see if this random testing needs to be reevaluated.
Excellent. Thank you. Up next, we have the Red Clay Education Foundation.
And I was unable to make that meeting as well. I just, it just, I just was unable to attend. So I don't really, I'm sure Dr. Green was there. I'm not sure what else was going on. So I don't really, I'm sure Dr. Green was there. I'm not sure what else was going on, other than preparing for the golf outing.
We talked about the golf outing. Discuss conditions currently in public education, the foundation wants to figure out ways that they can continue to support. They are looking for additional members. And so that was pretty much the gist of the meeting.
Very exciting. Up next, we have the Secondary Attendance Zone Enrollment and Program Committee meeting. I was there with Dr. Neesmith and Mr. Leonard.
I have a couple, couple of things to sum it up. The, so we, it was held. We talked about a number of things. It was a really good meeting, I just have to say, I think, kudos to Mr. Pruitt and those who are supporting, helping him put these together. I think they were very engaging. I like that we were kind of assigned to certain tables because it gave us a chance to interact with people that we didn't know and share ideas respectfully. And it was really a good chance to be able to brainstorm ideas. And so I, I heard something in public comment about, you know, different things that came up. They were literally just ideas. And so I think it, it's a safe place, hopefully, to be able to share thoughts and then come to consensus at some point. Some of the big pieces that we talked about were a review of the middle school and instructional capacity data. And then this helped inform our discussions on enrollment patterns and facility usage. We talked a little bit about that. We had, again, a brainstorming session on how to improve the attendance zones and the programming. And a key takeaway was the importance of gathering input from community stakeholders, particularly ensuring that we have a diverse representation of Wilmington families in our discussion. And then we identify additional data needs, which we'll, we'll discuss when we have our meeting tomorrow. And then we also have tomorrow's meeting and we'll be looking at our charge and our goal and how the Reading Consortium for Educational Equity, whatever their decisions are and the implications, and we'll be focusing on improving educational opportunities for all of our schools in, in current initiatives. Equitable, equitable school funding, because this is a big piece of the work that we do that's not only within our school system, but also this, at the state level. How we, how we reconfigure schools, how we expand access to high-quality programs. And so I, I really commend everyone for their work. I know this is going to be long work, it won't be a perfect solution in, in 10 months. But I think engaging the community and our legislators, because there are some areas that we do not have control over. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow's meeting and I think Mr. Leonard has something to add.
Yes, I do. Just a couple of general comments about it. The group's very productive, not only identifying and highlighting some inequities and inconsistencies in our tenant zones and programs across the secondary schools. But also brainstorming possible solutions to some of these issues our schools may be subjected to. To make up the group is pretty, pretty neat. We have educators, administrators, community members, board members and district personnel that provide a wide range of experience and expertise with an atmosphere of varying opinions and ideas that enables a robust discussion. And it was robust. And I enjoyed it tremendously. The work will help make the district schools institutions of opportunity for all students that enables them to be successful in education and life. A big shout out to Mr. Pruitt for doing a great job organizing these meetings with relevant activities and information to help stimulate our thinking while in the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Pruitt, appreciate it. And one other thing I'll add, as one of the variables besides Reading and WLC is whether Wilmington Charter will expand into 628 or not. I know that was in their five-year plan. So thank you again, Mr. Pruitt. Great job.
Thank you, though. Last but certainly not least, we have the Wilmington Learning Collaborative.
Um, yes, okay, thank you. I have there, we have had three meetings up until this, between February 18th and yesterday. I have two reports in board docs on, let me see. I want to say the 13th was a WLC workshop where we pretty much assessed and had a conversation with, regarding our partnership that we have with Effective School Boards, which I'm going to elaborate on in a second, regarding our listening sessions that we're working to conduct in the community. We have also been having conversations with local and state, the new local and state administrations, so that we could kind of align ourselves and see where we fit to make sure that we're working smart. So council and WLC team has been working to conduct different analysis on the productivity of current partnerships that we have in place to review viability and student outcomes, to ensure that we are staying student outcomes focused. We are currently in the process of mapping out the coming years and in that one of those partnerships, again, is with Effective School Boards. In, in November of 2024, we had a council retreat where we wanted to make sure, well, something that we learned was that we wanted to make sure that we are staying student outcomes focused and not adult inputs focused. So in order for us to conduct our listening sessions, we are, we gave ourselves a hard deadline yesterday, I want to say of the end of June, so that we can make sure that we can have all of these listening sessions and get the opportunity to hear what the community feels like the needs are, what they value and how that aligns with education. So that we can then put those guardrails and goals in place. And then I guess the final thing that I have is that today we had two ribbon cuttings, one at the Byard School and one at the Morris Pritchett Senior Academy for the chill room. And for those that are unfamiliar with the chill room, the Wilmington Learning Collaborative and Christina School District are in partnership with the Allegheny Health Network and the Morris Children's Health to provide students with a safe space for relaxation and emotional regulation. So in these chill rooms, they have behavioral specialists that have been fully vetted and, and are employed by Nemours. So we also had the opportunity to speak with the Allegheny Health Network last night at the council meeting and kind of, you know, get all of the answers that the community was asking about as far as these chill rooms are concerned. Some of them are wondering, you know, are these rooms a hangout spot and are these rooms just a place for kids to go to not be focused on their education, which is not what these spaces are for? These spaces are for students that need to balance out their mental health and that may be going through crisis. And we have well-vetted and, and educated individuals that will be running and, and working these rooms. And then aside from that, I think that that kind of concludes my report. But all three of them, or all two, both, both of them, rather, they are in board docs. And if anyone wants to refer back to them, please feel free to do so. And if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. English.
Ms. Matthews, if I could have one more shout out. I want to shout out to the Friends of AI who are 2,000 plus now. They've been doing great things at AI High. This past Friday, they had a spring cleanup. I know I saw that on Facebook and many of the members were there cleaning up the facilities all around the grounds, which was nice. They also collected donations for less fortunate students at AI High to purchase prom tickets and prom gowns. That was great. Much appreciated. And they've been very supportive of the adjustmentary program, which helps the middle school programs, the feeders on into AI. So I just wanted to make sure we thank you guys for doing that, that you're doing a great job and keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing that. I have some sprinkling to do myself. So we do have some information items for the public. We certainly always encourage folks to go into board docs for newer users and newer attendees. Please refer to board docs for that information. And now I move to.
And before you adjourn, I, I do want to make a disclaimer for the pre-K EYP. The dates for the choice are actually March 31st through April 30th. So it's the month, it's March 31st through April 30th. So I had, so we will make sure we update that both on our presentation that goes back up online. But we want the community, those who are listening in, those dates are March 31st through April 30th. So I do apologize for that.
Few more days, it's good news. Gives you a little bit more time. Excellent, thank you, Dr. Green. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thompson, you have a second. Thank you. Ms. Sander, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.